I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would everyone join me in the pledge of allegiance? I'm glad to be here, Mr. and Mrs. Dillard, of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Would have roll call this stuff, please.
Mayor's report.
Here.
Trustee's here.
Here.
Trustee's here.
Here.
Trustee's here.
We are having fun. I believe that all trustees have minutes of our previous meeting. Would there be any additions or corrections to these minutes? And if not, could I have a motion to have them accepted?
So move.
Motion by trustee Connor, second by trustee Short. All in favor?
Aye.
Right. Thank you. Motion carried. At this time, I'd like to open the meeting up to the general public. I can see there's no one from the general public. Would like to move on to the mayor's report. The mayor doesn't have a lot to say this evening, that's unusual. But I do have a notification here in front of me. On our 2004 elections, the village of Champlain, whereas the next village election of the offices of the village of Champlain, New York, will be held on March 16th, 2004. Whereas the Board of Trustees has said village must designate by resolution and publish offices which are to be filled at such election and the terms therefore thereof then be it therefore. Resolved that the Board of Trustees of the village had determined the following offices to be filled and to be voted thereupon with the terms of such offices respectfully noted as follows. Trustee term, one year. Trustee term, two years. Trustee term, two years. Judge term, two years. By it further resolved thus, as required by section 15 dash 104 dash 3A of the village election law, notice of such village election be given at least four months prior to said election date, and that the office be voted upon at said elections be likewise included in said notice. So I need a motion to accept these elections.
Second.
Motion by trustee Connor, second, and my trustee Short. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Now I believe these can be published in our... Again, this evening, I believe the trustees have some purchase requisitions in front of We have a mail house number 4750 at the sum of $70. And we have another one for... This must be... Call service box, top plans, MJ gate valve, WB 67-250, baser hydrant. This must be a new hydrant system. New hydrant?
It is South Street.
South Street.
Uh-huh. That was replaced today, by the way, and the hydrant that was there was four inches down, five and a quarter, which they're supposed to...
That way, Ken's water was shut off?
Yes.
So that requisition was for $1,441.35. We have another one for... They flew out lift handles.
They are the loop that are on top of the submersible pumps that be hooked when you pull the submersible pumps up from the bottom, and they become corroded to such an extent that we weren't going to be able to pull the pumps.
Right. Oh, did... Okay, item at 56 for a total of three of 168.
Is this the first time we've replaced those?
Yes.
How long have they been?
Five, six years. These... The other ones that are in other locations that are in a more dilute situation aren't quite as bad, but these are the ones that are in either the return sludge pit or the waste... waste sludge pit, and it's a very concentrated... It's a highly... It's got a high pH rather than a low pH.
And the material that these are made of are block as well?
Galvanized. And we're gonna put... We're trying to put in epoxy coating. Let's try, see if it works.
Just to prolong the life?
Try to prolong.
All right. Flow jet polymer injection pump.
I probably couldn't call this an emergency purchase, but I didn't want to. It wasn't a pure emergency. We had used the last one. We tried to have one in hand all the time.
Right.
The last one had died. They... I wish I could remember the amount of hours. I think he said something like four or 5,000 hours were on this pump.
And we just dispose of the old one?
Yeah, just a little... They're just a little pump, not much of anything. You don't... They don't get them rebuilt, even though it's 205 bucks.
Right.
The move is similar.
Right.
Now, the hydrant that we replaced?
Yes.
Is this replacing one we had on hand, or we do not have any on hand?
We did not have any on hand.
Okay. Should have at least one on hand.
One on hand. We normally replace packs of them. We get breakaways and stuff. Somebody hits one, they are set up on breakaways, so we can snap off.
And you were saying that one that was there was four and it went to five and a quarter?
Yeah. Which is the... And I never... I had no idea. There was also no valve in front of it to shut it off with. There is a valve in front of it now. If something were to go wrong, yeah, shut it off. You know, even as you say, Chuck, I ordered this... I'm trying to remember now, like, say on a Monday, you know, I had all the stuff on drainage source.
This had trouble with that hydrant, didn't it?
We've had a lot of trouble with that hydrant. We've just been trying to squeak by and hopefully it wouldn't cause problems, but now it's a good legitimate...
Well, I'm glad now that it's changed. We got the leather and it's done. Right.
I had to buy an extension for it, by the way, which will be out of a couple hundred bucks.
Did you move it?
Pardon?
Did you move it from where it was?
I couldn't move it as much as I wanted. Pretty much where it was. Unfortunately. We're just too busy in that area between the street and the drainage system to be able to really make it work.
Okay, good, Robert. So we have a total of the four requisitions coming to a total of $1,684.55. I'd like to have a motion to approve these requisitions, please.
So move.
Motion by trustee Porter. Second trustee Connor. All in favor?
Aye.
Carry. I myself, I think there's other issues I don't wanna address in correspondence, and at this time, I would like to be able to call an executive session this evening to talk about personnel issue.
Make motion.
Motion to that effect?
Second.
Second. Motion, trustee Connor, second. Trustee Porter, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. For myself, I think that'll be it this evening. Okay. We'll move on to our reports for trustee...
I just want to thank the Public Works Department. They did a good job in our picking up of our fall debris. I noticed there are still more that has been put out there since then, and I'm sure that we'll be going picking those up as time permits.
Well, I was asked if we would have one more day, because there were some people who are not even breaking their leave. They said, "Oh, we're just leaving if you're not gonna pick them up." So if you wanna say just one day next week, it should be time enough for us. Hopefully, we don't get a ton of snow, but... Or something like that.
I don't think in the forecast there's maybe a little bit of snow.
Contingent, so...
But not anything that's probably gonna stick around.
So if you'd like to make a day that so people would know to bring them up...
Whatever works for you and your people.
I would say probably it'll be a Tuesday next week.
Tuesday usually seems to be a pretty decent day.
Yeah. On Monday, you don't know what's gonna hit you.
Right. So that would be the 70s and that would be the 80s.
Right. 18 is the best one.
Yeah. So why don't we go with the 18th of November for another pickup?
The notice and the picker.
Right. The notice, I think it'll be... Trustee in favor?
The leads did not wish to cooperate with us this year. They would not fall down when they were supposed to.
No, you're right. Would there be anything else, trustee Connor?
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Your report, trustee Short?
Yeah, the only thing I have is being down in the placid all the time. We got Maggie's... Margie's moving out, and just we have a new business going in. You guys are not aware of the eye doctors that's gonna be moving in there. And as far as Ames, I guess their bankruptcy is gone through. I guess Pomelo... Mr. Pomelo is waiting to have his hands on it.
Well, the board has sent a letter to Mr. Pomelo as well, asking if there was anything that we could do with that. I don't believe we've ever received any correspondence back.
But I know they've been in there. They've been in there and doing the inspection on the building, and I guess there's... I guess there's progress being made anyways, that's hopefully something comes in.
Has anybody got any to interject to that?
If you could call after the letter and thank us for offering to help, we would have to do it.
Well, thank you.
We could do one way, and it's right after that letter, it's pretty long.
Yeah, I read it.
Well, we're hoping that something come in. This past week, you know, what you're talking about, last week, before last, I was in Albany and I actually got to go to a Target store. Home, aye. What I'd love to see at Target store, Champlain, New York. That's my thought, okay? What I'd love to see.
Probably Champlain and a lot of communities also.
Oh, yes.
But they're big. I don't know if you'd find...
Yeah, this building is too small for...
Right. But they are doing something with the building.
Yeah.
I'm sure, like yourself, you've been asked. I know I've been asked at work. I've been asked, you know, what is coming into that store? And like I try to tell the general public, I don't know.
No.
You know, we know no more than they do. If something comes, I'm hoping that we get to know the news so that we can at least be able to answer a question, but...
Right now, that it's answered.
Right now.
Well, until that bankruptcy was finalized.
Yeah.
You can't do anything.
No.
No, that is all just...
Then it's just not the Ames here. I mean, there's several Ameses around Clint's Falls. I went by that yesterday.
Oh, God, they're all over.
That's still vacant.
Yeah.
The one in Serenac Lake is still vacant. The one in Tucker Lake's still vacant.
This isn't the only state, let alone area.
Would there be anything else?
That's all, yeah.
Okay, then thank you. Trustee Porter.
Don't have a lot this evening, but I do... I did do some investigations about the uniforms that we talked about the last meeting.
Right.
Came out with some very good numbers that would probably end up being the same cost factor that we're looking at now, in the dollar amount that we furnish the employees to dress versus us furnishing them. There would actually be a savings, especially to the employees, because any wear and tear or damage is done to these uniforms would be covered by the leasing company. Narrowed it down to two companies, one which is local and one that is in a local area that services this area. Numbers are very close. I guess it's up to the board. Open for discussion or take a vote or make a motion, however this works.
Right.
If it's something we wanna do, I've got... The numbers match. It will put our people in a more, maybe, recognized manner. So the dollars at this point is not an issue.
Right.
It's what we wanna do as far as the appearance in the general public, and if we do decide, I guess the next move would be, in what fashion do we wanna do it? I brought in an example here in the back, the two colors. I just wanna stay with a red or an orange to be identified in traffic areas for safety purposes. From what I believe, and I don't know this as a fact, but the perma credits do recognize the orange, but I don't know that for sure. I was supposed to give you some more information on it, which I guess is neither here nor there, but if it is, it's only an extra bonus, again, as far as our perma credits or whatever. So I guess, if there's any other questions, I'm open... If I can answer them, great. Is this something that we...
I think it is something that we should look into.
Well, yeah, we... I believe that we should have a certain look for our crew that would identify them in a crowd, you know? And when you go by, as it is right now, I'm not saying... I'm not saying they don't work well, but I think a lot of times if there's questions to ask, they don't know who to ask, because they don't know who's actually the village employee.
The other thing that I was thinking, too, is that if we're on the verge of maybe a little bit of development and progress and everything, it probably gives a little more self-esteem and pride to the individual to be recognized as the authority in whatever area, the ditch, the water line, these, you know, the wastewater. So it not only helps anyone new to the area who doesn't know the individuals personally...
Right.
But in that fashion as well.
Has the employees, Bob, seen the two shirts there?
They have. I have no comments.
No comments, either way.
Do they have a preference on color?
I didn't poll them.
Anything major flags come up on an average?
Nothing more than the average.
Average.
The thing that I found real interesting, or actually was a benefit, is the cost to the village. There's not a major change at all, and secondly, it saves the employees money. So I mean, there's a major... They can continue to wash these uniforms under this program, just like they wash their own clothes now, but if there's any tears, stains, or anything like this, they turn them in, they'll be replaced. So this is a major... There's like two plans. Either we can go with them, with us paying to have them washed, which is gonna cost us a little bit more, or if we go the other route, with letting the employees wash them themselves, just like they're doing now.
Right.
The benefit they have at this point is if they tear them or hook them, rather than ruining the clothes, we have the option to turn them in and have them replaced at no charge because of they're under a lease contract.
Right. Where they don't have to go out and buy new ones.
Right. And, you know, just obviously looking out the best we can for our employees and rising cost of... We're talking about the health care and whatever. This can help take the sting off, maybe somewheres along the lines. And also, if they did have a pair of clothing that were soiled really bad, instead of bringing their own washer, they do have the option to turn them back into the laundry company as well. For some reason, if they got seriously covered in grease or mud or oil, the laundry company does also wash it, should that pertain. On a regular basis, they'll take care of any tears, rips, stains, the regular means if we wanna initiate that program of letting the employees wash their clothes as they know.
Is it possible to do 50/50 on it?
They didn't indicate... Neither company indicated a program that went on or off. They both have a... They wash them every week, or you wash them every week.
'Cause I've heard... I've heard the comments, both pro and con, on washing themselves.
Right.
There's been some, you know, some discussion.
Exactly. And I do know, like you said, a lot of times if you furnish the employee with clothes, a lot of times they wash them themselves anyways, because either they forget to bring them in or stuff like this. This is kinda common.
Right.
So at that point, we'd be paying for a service that probably wouldn't be utilized to the fullest extent. If we went the other route, the employees are washing their clothes right now anyways. Now we've got them in a uniform, presentable, matching situation, plus if they ruin a pair, it's not out of the employee's pocket. The way it stands right now, the employee would have to, obviously not to come to work with no clothes, they'd have to replace them. This way, they could turn this pair of pants or shirt in and be replaced with another.
Is this a, like, a year contract or something?
It's a one or two-year setup. I didn't... All of them are a contract, yes, and they're both very comparable, the two companies. And, you know, I believe in dealing locally as much as we can, that the dollars doesn't come in right, but if this is something that we agree on tonight to do, I will investigate it more before we say A or B or whatever.
Right.
Obviously, we're looking to save the village money, and actually, it's gonna save the employee money as well, but at the same time, if we can deal locally, I'd prefer it, but if the dollars doesn't justify it, then we need to move to the next one, I would say.
Well, I think we're all in agreement that we need to have something out in the general public. Our staff or our crew has to be, you know...
Recognizing.
Recognizing.
And if we can do it and make them look safe, or be in a safer position, I guess. Anybody's opinion on the DOT orange versus the red, or even a blue? We can go with almost any color that's available, I just...
I have my opinion as far as the orange. I like the orange because of the visibility, 'cause I don't think red is as visible by any means.
Right.
Red is nicer as far as the employee probably would prefer the red over the orange. But I think...
Some of the guys, I think, now wear orange T-shirts in the summer, don't they?
Yes.
They have that DOT orange. You see state workers, they all wear it.
They wear red.
Right.
It's orange. It's an orange.
Well, I think before we go any further, ultimately, it's our decision, of course.
And I think we're the ones that are paying for the clothes, whether they buy their own or we contract out.
We're paying for them right now anyways.
It's... Yeah. It's our decision.
Well, what I would like to do is poll them and see which ones they would like to do, you know? To say, "This is gonna happen."
I think through the last few weeks, I mean, I've had them here, how long? Well, probably two, three weeks.
Oh, yeah.
At least, and nobody seemed to really suggest anything, or... I mean, obviously, they're aware that we're talking about this, and no one voiced their opinion.
Well, I've had... I've had somebody say, yeah, they like the orange, and, you know, some like the red.
So it's not really a...
Yeah.
They don't... It's a null issue or a null point.
Yeah. I think that some people don't like any.
Well, that's the human nature, yes. I guess, you know, I was just looking to get rid of the paperwork and see, if it looks like something we wanna do, the numbers match, it actually benefits the village taxpayers as well as the employee. There's a savings on both parts.
Well, I think if it's within what we budgeted for, in my opinion, we'll go with it.
Yeah, me too. I am.
As far as color, you know, I think orange does... For appearance-wise, for safety, it's an issue, and we're gonna get credit on...
Well, I don't know. I'm pretty sure the...
For the perma...
The person from the laundry outfit seemed to know that when one did it, the next town or village found out about it, so they did it too, because of the... The first one did it because of perma credits, their insurance issue, and then that just started like kind of a chain reaction. And not that I feel we're in that position, but if we can benefit in another area as well, why not take them out? But I can't guarantee that. He's supposed to get back with me on that.
Well, to think of it as we are in Harton's way a lot of the time when we're out working on the highway.
Now, what, do they have their name on them?
You can get their name and also village.
Village of Champlain.
With one company, the first time setup is no charge. With the other company, the first time setup is $3 per shirt.
Can you phrase it?
What I'd like to ask you about is, you know, especially in a... Like we had last year where they were standing, doing a lot of thawing and running back and forth.
Wintertime?
Yeah, wintertime, yeah. What do they have to offer?
Well, I'm not sure if they have anything to offer. How do we normally handle it now? They have...
They stay by them. No, no, but they buy them on their uniform.
They...
They have...
The employees right now buy a winter jacket that's reflective for duty?
Not reflect. Not reflect. But heavy-duty, you know, your coveralls, car hats, that type of thing.
Well, I know...
I mean, they only need one set a year normally, but...
Oh, yeah, one set's gonna cover the cost of your allotment the year.
I think... I broke this down. I didn't mention this either. I did break this down. What the village is spending right now on clothing versus steel-toe safety shoes, I did not include the steel toe. My own opinion, and I should voice this in front of the board, I think maybe I spoke to a few of you here and there about it. The steel-toe safety shoe is a separate allotment that we allow our employees, and I left that completely separate, so that stays. So they're still gonna have the steel-toe safety shoe, and the numbers work out to go in a full dress uniform that way. Depending on which... Either company we go with, there's still a savings, and which I can haggle out the details if we decide to do this. It doesn't matter which company. I would prefer to stay local, but if the numbers don't come in close enough, well, then obviously, we're gonna need to know who it's best.
Well, I think the general consensus of the board is that we do have a uniform. Trustee Short?
Right.
Trustee Connor?
Yes.
Okay. And I agree, too. I do think that we need a uniform, so we go from there. Now, if the color seems to be an issue, I myself really don't care about the color. I like the orange. Maybe it's a little...
It's eye-catching.
It's eye-catching, but...
That's what we want, really.
In the same token, it's recognizable, and I think that's what we're looking for. I've heard the comments, "Well, the orange is not so good, and maybe the red would be better." But I don't know. When I'm out in traffic, I know when I used to be fireplace, I wore my best, I wore my stuff, and believe me, even at that, there was always somebody trying to use you as a target. So I mean, you know, I'm thinking, the more visible, the better off we are, 'cause we are out there. You know, the people are there, and safety is number one as far as I'm concerned. If we have to make the choice, we'll make it orange.
Sounds right to me as well. I just... And if there is the advantage of the perma, why not take advantage of it, the perma points, which isn't for sure, but...
Well, we're doing it for notisability, and this will do it. I believe it. Trustee Connor?
Yes.
With the orange, trustee Short?
Yes.
Well, I guess it's unanimous with the color. So I guess what we're gonna say is, Mr. Dawson, do we need a motion to proceed? So I guess what we're gonna say is, Mrs. Dawson, do, we need a motion to proceed on with this, or?
We could to change the policy to include uniforms and company to check up.
If I know from the board that this is a goal, neither, irregardless of which company, there's, it's gonna be a benefit to the village, and obviously to the employees, and then work out the details with them.
Right. So I think what we're gonna do is need a motion to change our policy from the employees taking care of their uniforms or buying their uniforms, to the village supplying their uniforms to a rental service.
And what, what timeframe, when does this expire, when does this start?
So usually it's a budget year, beginning of...
When do they have their allotment, their, their, in June?
So I mean, if they've already spent that allotment, matter of fact.
It's already, the checks have already been cut.
No, I mean, you can't.
Right.
Can't undo it.
No.
Can't undo it.
Okay, so in other words, and the thing of it is, you've done this much work, I think it needs to be put in place for our next budget year, because if they've spent their allotment, I mean, we're not gonna be up and again. You know what I'm saying?
That would be salt to feed.
Yeah, it would be, that's what I'm saying, I don't...
No, you can't take it back, no.
And I don't think we wanna double that, but if you've done this much work, I think we need to put it in place for our next budget year, stating that as of June 1st, you will be getting a uniform supplied through the village, and there will be no more uniform allowance. Safety shoes are still attached, but no more uniforms.
Now, their allotment, they got in June, and I'm not sure of the purchase policy, they bring in the receipt for what they've gotten?
Yeah.
And we see that it matches, I mean, the original agreement to that was for them to get same colors?
Since the first year.
What's that?
Okay, since the first year that we had it. That was the object, I was gonna get the same.
Right, that's what I understood, right.
In other words, to take it off of the village and just put it to the employee, initially was what they wanted, haven't done. But I think, I think now with all of this paperwork, and I, I think we agree on it, we could make a motion to that effect to have it come through in our new budget year?
Be June of next year.
It would be June of next year, I mean, we have it in place now, so...
Make, make sure to note, I don't know how long these numbers stand for.
Right.
So we'll go through that, we'll check it out again next year, and make sure that everything fits.
But, yeah.
Well, something, you know, a one-year versus a two-year contract, maybe the rates would be a little less for a two-year contract compared to a one-year.
Well, what I'm saying is, I, you don't wanna, you don't wanna put any of this into effect until June of next year.
Right, what I'm saying, it comes down to...
At June of next year, these numbers may change.
It comes down to where they change, you know, cause in a one-year or two-years, who would think that a two-year contract at that point in time, they're ready to go with us, would be cheaper than a one-year contract.
That's true.
Yeah, but I think we need to put it in place as of now anyways, cause if this is what we wanna do, this is what we have to do. And I think the motion, I put it to that state that we will change the purchase policy of our uniforms for the village to not, from the employee to the employer, the employer will make sure that they all have their uniforms, and then they elect to wash them and take care of them. And, do I get a motion to that effect?
So who?
Do I get a second to that effect?
Second.
Second, motion, Trusty Berger, second, Trusty Short, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Something we may do is, if you come up with, you know, something now, we can make it, you know, tell them, we'll, we'll have the contract as of a certain time, you can maybe go forward with it.
Lock in now for June of next year?
Right.
We plan on doing that, and this is where we are, we will be using your services, blah, 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 blah.
I can mention to them, you know, something of this dollar mill, you know, it's not real exciting to them, but, you know?
But it may prove to be beneficial on my end.
Um, that's, that all I've got, see.
Okay, then thank you, Trusty Berger. Report of clerk treasurer.
I only have my report of Reverend, and standard, for October 31st, 2003.
One of these years, I'll figure these all out. I have a pretty good handle on them, if you go by count. Does anybody have any questions for clerk treasurer? Okay, we'll move on to reporter superintendent. One without love.
You have my written report, is there any comments, chineal, explanations? That would also go if you wanted for the period that I was gone, if there was anything that was outstanding that struck anybody, you know?
No, the foreman was very informed at my last meeting. I'll read this over. Have we, and I know I spoke to you this week, have we come up with any other solution to the water, the air in water on Ridge Road?
Yes. First of all, we think we know where the culprit lies, but it's proving that, you know, it's inside of a valve, and it's inside of a piece in somebody's property, so we have to find that out. I've been to the town, gone over there with their clothes off, so they're taken care of. We've got that moving, hopefully. We also picked a new bleed point on, on an elbow, which actually picks up more of the air. Eventually, I think once we resolve this, it would be behoove them to, to put in an automatic valve, so it wouldn't leave any air at that elbow. That would be the highest point in that.
And it can be done, too, that they do have automatic bleeders.
Right. Okay. One of the things, we have the old champagne hotel, as I said to you earlier this evening, we just talked about it, evidently she has a quote on, on what, on getting the work done, asbestos, oh, God, I think I'm trying to say, anyway, the, the asbestos abatement procedures are set in place, that's, will be all set on that. It should be gone, hopefully, the end of the week.
The building?
Oh, anything that's in the way, and then, you know, this company is, will move right along, supposedly, have the wherewithal to move right along, begin that.
Cause we have, I've, I've spoken to superintendent Sullivan numerous times on this, because I don't know if any, any other board members have had any comments on that, but, oh, I've had phone calls, phone calls.
Terrible, it's terrible.
Upon people stopping me, and yes, it is a concern, not only the appearance, my biggest concern, which I've talked to superintendent Sullivan, is safety issue, the safety is astronomical. You can't see children, people walking in the road to get around.
I've got a, a little input into that, not with any answers, obviously, cause I don't know much more about what's going on, but if, if the procedure so far was obviously waiting for asbestos report, that's proven true, and from what I've seen in the paper, I guess her insurance isn't really taking a good liability stand in that situation. But at this point, the sidewalk is village property, and that obstruction is due to something on our sidewalk, so therefore, if it can be moved and handled by a contractor at this point, isn't there something that we can do or, or ask her to do as far as that one area? The rest of the building, I mean, obviously, it's still her liability with still her insurance.
I want her to do it first.
Excuse me?
I want her to do the work on the sidewalk first.
Right.
There's, she is discussing trying to recover some brick and something, I don't know, and that's fine, all fine, all good if that's what she wants to do, but...
But I mean, I guess she's finding out that her insurance company is, is like five thousand dollars for cleanup and, and whatever the paper was saying, so, which is neither here nor there, that's, that's really not our responsibility. Our responsibility is to make sure the sidewalks are passable. Now that we know it's a safe condition, that it can be handled, can be moved, then we need to address that first and say, geez, let's get our sidewalk back into village passable for residents.
Mm-hmm. That's the first thing.
Right, have, have we done that, or we're moved to that?
She knows it, yes.
She's aware of that?
Yes.
Okay, so we've already addressed that?
Yes.
Okay, what was her response at that point?
She just listened to me and said, yeah, you know.
Right, and I think...
Maybe it was pretty non-committal, I mean, she's just trying to get the thing going.
Right.
That's where I wanted to set.
And then you just say that probably by the end of the week, that the sidewalk should be cleaned up?
Why, most of it will be cleaned up anyway.
The sidewalk or the building, what are we talking about?
The building.
She's got somebody...
Yeah, supposedly, now, you know, I'm still Thomas, you know?
Cause I'm, I'm like the rest of the board here, I've had people upon people asking, what's the deal with that, what's the deal with it? And, and there's not, I mean, I agree, our hands are tied, it's her property, her building, but the sidewalk is our responsibility.
Right.
We need to make sure we get through there, and if it's been deemed safe and movable material...
No, it hasn't been, I don't know that it's been called, called safe and movable. They're supposed to do, put some procedures in place to...
So there's some fact in finding that whoever the contractor is, has to particularly handle it?
Handle it.
Right.
So, and they have got to deal with whatever they find in an appropriate manner.
I just hope there's no damage to this underneath the sidewalk, it's there from all that debris.
Cause the traffic issue is, is the issue, really?
That's a major one.
The building, yeah, it is an eyesore, we are kind of, you know...
But the traffic and the safety issue is, is...
That's the main thing, and it is a public sidewalk, it's...
Yeah, that's what Mrs. Sullivan's been working on, him and I have worked closely on this, over the last week or so, really in depth. Matter of fact, I was on the phone when we get today about it, so, we're doing what we can, I mean, and I know that, and I've given them different avenues, and he's, he's looked at them, and one of them, he said, well, that's the reason we aren't doing it, so I said, well, okay, let's not go there, so, I mean, we have come up with ideas as well, okay? We're just hoping that this will fly as soon as they get the O gate, and that's what we're looking for. Anything else for Mrs. Sullivan?
Well, it's not necessary for Mr. Sullivan, something is worth mentioning, I just wanna congratulate Louis Kissel for completing his wastewater treatment curriculum courses. I guess now he'll need to take the final tests, be certified.
That's correct. Is that test something that's taken, does he gotta go back to take this, or is it...
There's one in the, yes, it's gotta be...
Can you take it on the internet, I mean, they mail it to you or nothing like this? Do you go back to...
Well, he doesn't go there, I think he's, I have the correspondent telling me where it is. I think it's in Albany, but it might be in... The next item down from that area on the Ridge Road though, is a gully culvert, and the people that live upstream of that are quite upset, and justifiably so. And I'm caught, in that it seems whatever I'm doing is perhaps not the right thing. Waiting for advice from returning now to find out if the latest, my latest moves are gonna be correct.
So we know this is ongoing anyways?
Yes.
This has been, this has been a problem for some time, and, yes, we have done numerous things, and we're just definitely doing a different approach to it, but again, we have to make sure that that's, that's within our realm to do this.
On the last page, you should have three pages, and I, I don't know if that makes any sense to you, but this is my take on how that PBT and the GB-50 work together, and we now have the proper parts on hand to do it, to, to put it in use.
That's a telemetry product, for the laundry.
Those parts that were given to us, or we were told to put in, that weren't the correct parts, were they shipped back?
They are not even out of the system yet, one, one part is, and the other part isn't. We didn't take it out because then you're gonna lose your...
And did we get our original ones back?
No, that's, I've got the call on those.
I, I, I think I initiated the, the part being returned, and when Bob came back from vacation, I, I brought him up to speed with what's been happening, and I think you put one call in, or Bob's following up on it, to get our old parts back.
Right.
In the first place.
To get it back.
We have...
That, that, that whole, this whole scenario, I'm really not pleased with, that telemetry and that tank.
Yeah, neither am I. Well, the tang is dry, I don't feel very nice about it at all. I guess that's about it. Do you have anything for me?
Are we ready for snow?
Hmm?
Are we ready for snow?
Yes.
Yes, we are. So the report, Sanders on, clouds are ready, as much as we don't wanna be.
How was the, the compact tractor doing?
Fine.
No problems, everything seems to fit, and it works?
Yeah, yeah, it's been fine. We're all set on that. They, we put away the mower and stuff.
The mowing deck and everything is, that PM, cleaned at PM, then put away?
Yeah.
So the guys seem to find an asset, I mean, it kind of fit with the day-to-day schedule?
Yeah.
Then may I ask, is it put in a safe place that things won't be piled and dropped and broke, and, okay? Cause I, I noticed that time, sometimes things are put away to use for...
And they have, has it, you know?
Yeah, and I don't think we need that to happen, that's why I just brought that up, okay?
That's cool.
Okay. Anything else for our superintendent Sullivan? Okay, Mrs. Dawson, could we go on to correspondence, please?
Item one is correspondence from the Flatsburg Chamber of Commerce regarding safety seminars. Item two is correspondence from the village engineering report regarding funding of the change to the home program. Item three is information and correspondence from Community Link regarding the mobile home care, and that story.
Right, I read this, what is our policy on, what is our policy on this? I, I know it's, it's a non-expense for people who can, who can't afford. I don't think we donate anything?
I don't think we can.
Okay, that's what I thought. In other words, what I, the only reason I'm bringing it up is because I would like, if anybody is concerned out there, the general public, to know that we as a municipality cannot contribute to this, that's the only reason I brought it up.
Item four is correspondence from New York Roll Water informing us that a representative in our area during a mobile home event.
Has there been a date set on that? Or does Mike Bill?
No.
Item five, the donation received from Conroy and Conrad for our park fund. I don't know if you want to designate, make this do a specific project or... I don't know if you want to designate this to a specific, um, project or...
Do we have any line items in our budget for park or recreation? Facility?
verification, if there's anything that...
But didn't we have monies?
We had a grant that we haven't completed yet.
Or like the river stream?
Right, but it's a grant that we asked for an extension on?
Yes.
Right.
So we don't really have a line item account for that?
I think if the intention to that was for a park, I don't know if we could create one, I don't know what the procedure is for that?
Well, I think we need to keep it separate from other things, we just don't want it lumped into the general fund.
Right.
Without having it designated as something.
We do have a park downtown, and something would be done to the park, we could just...
What you use is...
So there's a park fund? Does the park relate to that one only, or all our parks?
The grant is a fifty-fifty grant.
Right.
Okay, so that's important for this?
Yeah, it's a fifty, oh, the grant to the state.
Right.
Yes.
So, that's...
We use that thousand as a part of the...
That's correct.
Right. Because that was asked for an extension on it, whatever was going on, and I'm hoping to do that next year.
So, to answer your question, or Janice's question, would you put that in another fund?
For the grant, or do you want to use it for something else? I mean, it's your option, you know, you can...
Is the grant coming for sure, not knowing?
Well, we've asked for an extension.
We've asked for an extension, it was...
We've been granted the grant, no?
Yes.
Yes.
And...
We're not ready?
Due to a very, a lot of reasons.
Okay.
We didn't follow up on a few things. Thought we did, but I guess we didn't.
The dollar amount on that grant, do we know where it is?
Is it eighteen dollars?
Sixteen, I think.
Sixteen?
I think it was sixteen and some change.
Yeah.
I'd say, I'm not sure, I could be wrong.
It's not necessarily...
It's not necessarily dollars.
It could be...
Right.
In kind help.
Yes, right.
Right.
Right, that's, and that was how the, that's what the intention was at the time.
And where, how far away is that grant from completion? Or how far away are we from that grant from completion?
Well, when we look, oh, when I've looked at the river a dozen times, and things keep changing on it, I'm just wondering the wisest of not cutting the bank.
No, but where, that's not...
That's the whole point, well...
We haven't done anything.
Where's the money? That's not, that's not one of my questions, my question is, the grant has not been written yet, we have not received a check yet.
Right.
What do we, how far away is that?
We need to do the job, we need to do the job, we need to have a contract signed with them. Evidently, there were some things that I thought were done, but I guess weren't. And we've got to complete those things and get them into...
I guess, just so I can understand, the grant has been approved, providing we...
Right.
Complete our site?
Right, some engineering involved as well.
And as soon as that's done, they will write that check?
Well, you have to spend it.
Right, you have to spend it.
And then you...
Right, then you get the check, so...
But is there a special line item that we can add to our budget, that we can put that into, where it's gonna be totally separate from anything else? That's, do I need a motion to do that?
No, I guess that's what I was asking, do you want to put it aside, or do you want to designate a project?
I think we just want to put it aside for now. I don't really want to earmark it for anything right yet, because we may put it in limbo. I think we need, just need to put it aside, something will come up.
We need to have it available, if the grant is an issue, we need it for that, or if something else comes up, that's...
See, like trustee Connor, I don't think it needs to go in the general fund, but I think it needs to just be...
There.
There.
Does that answer your question?
Mm-hmm. I'm just reading, Bob, so I didn't ask you to mention on that grant. Ready for the time frame on the ballot?
No.
No. Who was the extension writer?
He wrote the letter September twenty ninth.
And he did get back to me, I've got a certain amount of things that have got to get done.
But he hasn't given the okay yet?
Yeah. One of the big things that they seem to worry about was the sign, the signs up there. Always concerned about something that's...
Item six is correspondence from Patricia Era Assessor and Senator Bette Floe regarding Chapter Five, Rule Eight, the Financial Disclosure Bill for Assessors. Item seven is correspondence from National Water Insurance Company regarding NFIP by name and title, by number four.
I didn't give it up.
Eight is correspondence from, from Perma regarding our Workman's Compensation Harvest for January first. And I know that on there was a bunch of books, so we're not too bad off.
We're over both.
Yeah, so we're over.
Yeah, but it's...
Yes. Get a lot worse.
Item nine is information regarding brownfields grant to the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. Item ten is a survey of recreational programming needed in two thousand and four from the Clinton County Bureau. Do you know if anyone would be interested in the survey, or should we just, you're at the Tanny, or how you want to handle it? Is it addressed to town supervisors or youth commissioners, and you might ask her, and she might know better.
Right. Because she is actually, because it actually goes through the town, and we make a contribution to the town. So I would take it either to the town or herself.
Item eleven is correspondence from Attorney Kiebel regarding a settlement and lease agreement with Comptel Consultants with my side. I, after we got the letter saying that we had a settlement, I ordered Mr. Kiebel to be sure that it was okay to sign. I just think we need to have, give the mayor permission to sign this, we don't care. It is a resolution, I have to be proud, so we just need a motion for that.
We have motions or a resolution?
What is, what is, um...
They're gonna...
Comptel, it took all, or it has questioning my side about our bills in the last, I think, a year and a half. And they determined that my side was in nature of two thousand and seven, and this bill.
Correct.
Yes, but we in turn have to give Comptel a push on it, could be decided first.
For doing the research.
Right.
So we just have to pass the resolution, and the mayor, or we decide the paperwork, and...
Make that motion.
Motion by trustee Short, second, for a resolution, and have the mayor sign it, and second by trustee Connor. All in favor? Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item twelve is correspondence from Attorney Herzog, in response to Attorney Kiebel regarding Scott Bechar's settlement, which is back to the last ten years.
Right. I guess this is money owed to the village from Scott Bechar.
I think he was willing out of the village, he couldn't add to the property tax, and he took the court and the settlement and...
Collect it?
Collect.
Until the property's sold?
He didn't appear, which is the fault.
But there was a settlement, I hear, it was...
But, yeah, I guess I don't have the letter from, I guess, from Kiebel.
I've got one from Herzog.
Oh, yeah, that's, but I didn't get...
Is there a copy of that?
So I guess, is there a settlement proposed?
Uh, the letter from Attorney Kiebel, Dear Janice, I received a letter, copy attached, from Attorney Judston Herzog, who represents Scott Bechar. Would you please review this matter with the mayor, with Mayor LaPorte? While the amount is not a large sum, the file shows that a great deal of effort was extended to obtain this judgment, in addition, villagers paid additional costs, amount of judgment, five eighty-one sixteen, certified copy of payments, five dollars. Please give me a call so I can advise Attorney Herzog on the proposed settlement figure, and as a PS, I spoke to Attorney Herzog, and he will advise his client to pay six hundred dollars to settle the judgment. I would recommend that the village accept this offer, please let me know.
But that's a far cry from what I actually wrote.
It's five eighty-one.
Five eighty-one?
Well, that's from nineteen ninety-seven, all the, all the interests and other charges that have been tacked on over the years is into the...
Thousands? Depends what was...
No, that's not a true figure, it's, this is what the actual settlement was, the interest.
The original, the original amount.
Yeah, how long ago was this, ten years ago, ninety-seven?
Ninety-seven. But this was the actual...
Eighty-seven.
Five years ago.
That was what we settled for in court.
Oh, okay, I, I thought.
Right.
Because it was kept on a books, and it was, the interest, I mean, it was accumulated from the figure every month.
Yeah, yeah.
So that wasn't a true figure.
Yeah, well, we can't...
Okay, all right, no, I understand, okay.
So, what you're saying...
That is why we sent this to him, to advise us what we could do.
So in other words, you probably need it in a state, in a form of a motion, that, that Mayor LaPorte signed that in the sum of six hundred dollars to take care of this matter. Do I get a motion to that effect?
So...
So move trustee for you, second?
Second.
Trustee Short, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, get that paperwork out, I'll sign that as well.
Item thirteen is response from Attorney Kiebel, in response to a letter from James O'Fay regarding our noise law. That was something else that we sent down to Mr. Kiebel. His letter in our, in his book of our law, and we've gotten some noise laws from Nikon, this is a good buy.
We do have a decimal meter.
Okay, see, my biggest problem with this whole thing is, and I, and I, and I, I'm probably way out of line. We have the decimal meter, who's going to enforce it? Who's going to enforce it?
The codes person?
No, no, we have to have law enforcement enforce that.
Law enforcement to enforce something?
See, that's where we're at odds, okay? We ourselves do not have a municipal police department. So, in all essence, if this has to be done, we have to get to the appropriate authorities. Appropriate authorities have to come down with the decimal meter to read this, to get this, so they can actually write a summons to appear in court. I mean, we can have every law in the world that we want, but if we have nobody to enforce it, we are at odds. I, I, you know. I know that's a problem, and I think we need to, to look at other things. If this is the case, will we be able to get a law enforcement officer to come down and do this as well?
It's gonna be a properly trained law enforcement officer.
Thank you. See, we just, as, as a village, cannot go there and do that. So we do have issues that we have to work on, okay? If we had our own municipal police department, and they would get to training, and they were called out, and they could go to that, whatever property owner, whatever the incident is, and bring out the meter and say, okay, you are in violation, and then say them. But until that happens, we have a problem. And I don't feel that, I know we need to do something, but we need to do it with, within the restraints of the law, we can't be outside of the law.
You can't make up your own law enforcement?
No, we can't do that, okay? So, you know, I know what he's saying, and I've read it, and I'm saying to myself, which is fine. But we have to get the people that are trained in it, and if we have the thing, which is fine, but we still have to have law enforcement to enforce this.
So the person with the cred, training to run?
Right, so. I mean, I know where we gotta go, but there's no easy solution to this.
Do, do we know in fact that it's still been a problem, or, I, I think I spoke to him after he was here, and he did have another meeting with the mister or the misses, with the mister. And I, I think it had toned down, because I had spoke with him, and I, has that gone to sleep now, or is...
There's nothing else.
Because I, I did hear from the plaintiff that everything seemed to be better.
Why can't he mention that in the last meeting here?
He tended to do that, yes, that things have gotten better in the last, since he spoke with her.
Right.
Since then, I apparently had spoke with him, or something, and it was still okay, so I'm not sure if this is still a major issue at this point, at this particular occasion.
Well, I don't think so, I don't think it is, but I think, again, if we have, if these are our noise ordinance, and what we as, as, as a board need to set up something that is within the law, because we have a law that we as a board can't enforce, so, I mean, you know. And I like saying that, but that's what it is, I mean, we need law enforcement.
I mean, as it stands, yes, we're here as a board, and, and obviously, we're not law enforcements, we're here to, to put into effect certain laws that we can. However, enforcing a law doesn't necessarily, I don't think we should take all the weight on our shoulders on that. There is state police, there's sheriffs, there's so on and so forth.
Right.
So maybe with this situation, if, if that person so declares worthy of it, he needs to call the proper authority who has the licensing or training in the decimal meter, and, and address it from there.
Have it with that problem.
And if they have any questions, that, whatever law enforcement, they can come to the board, we can show them the law, and, 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 of the way we can...
Because we got the law in place.
Right.
We don't have the enforcement.
We have the law in place, not the enforcement.
And not just us, any municipalities that can't afford their own...
I don't know of any in this vicinity or local area that has a law enforcement trained in decimal meters for that purpose, that I know of, but who knows?
If I get out to you and was calling you.
Right.
His ears hurt?
His ears are over ninety decimals. Thank you, Mrs....
Item fourteen is correspondence again from Attorney Kiebel, and NCCS, regarding the school closing, and the speed signs down the street.
Well, I brought that, I, I was talking about it, we have a letter from the school district clerk stating that the Northeastern Clinton Central School District closed Shampine Elementary School, announcing Shampine effective July one, two thousand and three. So we have written confirmation that Northeastern has closed the school. Now, with that information sent to Attorney Kiebel, could we have a local law enacted to change that? Since it is no longer a school district? And that's where we have to go, we can't just pull a sign down in the ground, we actually have to go through and change. It's no longer a school district, and our speed limit will be thirty miles an hour to link the Bell Street. So do you think that that should be addressed to Attorney Kiebel to make our local law for this?
Yeah, we could ask him to have a court, a court meeting, and we can send a hearing after that.
And we'll send a hearing after that, and that will bring this into our, our new year. Thank you.
And item fifteen, what the election notice that you have already addressed, will be published.
All business. Number one, the steam plant system check, we're still working on that.
Have we heard anything from them in inquiry on where their payment is, steam plant?
Well, have you?
Oh, you have?
Well, they called.
Uh, day before yesterday, they called, wondering where their payment was. And I thought I put a note in your desk.
Well, you might have...
That's okay, being in light of that, Bob, maybe your next, your next call, would you make to them saying, you know, in the... you know, in the event that we should ever get our parts returned, then we can take that to our next board meeting and have it approved for payment. What we found out and the reason why I'm saying that is that the parts that they removed from our property, our property that were, that they removed from our property, uh, was taken back with them. And the reason why it becomes more important as time goes on is because we're being aware that if that particular part gets hit by lightning, it's a flat rate of two hundred and fifty dollars to have it rebuilt opposed to buying a new one at.
Six hundred and ten.
Six hundred and some dollars.
Right.
So it was kind of my important, when Bob was gone, I was into this more in getting the parts back. They said that they would send them back, but we haven't received them, so this phone call.
So we're not receiving them.
Right, so with this phone call that they generated gives us the opportunity to call them back and just remind them that we're waiting on them, they're not waiting on us at this point.
Mm-hmm.
Good.
I have the letter, do you want that to go anywhere?
I, I would, I think we should hold that.
It's gotta be re-edited.
Yeah.
It's gotta be edited.
Because there's, there's another final chapter that'll close that letter. So if we could hold it, that'd be great, yeah.
We either hold it or send it as part of this and edit it ahead of time.
Maybe at this point, a phone call would be best.
Yeah.
Used and then we'll document stuff as.
Right steps at the right time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good.
Age exemption. I think we need to table this one more month anyways. I was reviewing it, I don't think it would be very definite, I don't think it would be detrimental to the village.
What is, what is that?
Uh. Had it in your correspondence from before.
Yeah, from the last meeting, uh, basically it gives an extra, depending on what we decide, amount of exemption for, um, the elderly as far as their taxes are concerned.
It says, uh, persons of disability and limited incomes have been amended to increase the maximum income to twenty-four thousand. The previous ceiling was twenty-one-five. This is all the increasing of a slight scale portion of these exemptions, right? I do believe the tale is past this.
If you decide to pass that, it has to be done by the law, so.
Right.
It's a factor.
Right. So. I will take that again. Okay, number three on there is Parker Brothers Water and Soil Plant. Has that come back from the town?
I haven't seen anything.
I haven't seen anything.
No documentation as far as the district, is that what?
No, this is.
No, this was interior planning of the.
Oh, okay, I remember that, yes.
Of the piping, of the building itself.
Yep.
I think this is where we're going.
Yep.
Okay, we have a receipt pending on that.
Have to make sure that it does, it does what it says it's supposed to.
That's how we're looking for it.
Yep, we need that for the next step.
Right, that's where we're going. Uh, number four, again, we've, I think we've addressed Allen's speed, speed signs. Number five, our purchase policy, this is gonna, this is gonna get old, we'll get to it one of these times. At number six, I believe we've addressed our uniforms for the DP. Have you? Okay, any new business to come before this board is seated? If not, should I get a motion to go into executive session, please?
Hello.
Motion by trustee Connor, second by trustee lawyer.